We can start with announcements. Yes, Mr. Franco, tell us about the John Wilson event.
Yeah, I want to make sure that everybody is aware of and remembers that there's a long coming event on Sunday here in Town Hall, 3:00 PM, and that's the unveiling, the celebration, dedication of John Wilson and his Martin Luther King Jr. bust. This is an acquisition that's going to be displayed in Town Hall and is the product of the committee to commemorate John Wilson and many Brookline residents and businesses who contributed towards the cost of the acquisition. So I'm excited about it. I plan to be there. I know my colleagues are on the board as well. 3:00 PM this coming Sunday in the lobby of Town Hall, free and open to all.
Okay. I have a quick summary. I'd like to just announce or not announce the report that the MLK Day celebration was a huge success, in my opinion. We had a very successful service project before the event. The event itself was very well received, both the film prepared by Harvey Brodmann, Brookline Facing Civil Rights, which is an interview, a film of interviews by various Brookline residents and their experiences during the civil rights era. It included everyone from Michael DeCaucus to John Wilson's widow, Bobby Nabel, Mark Gray, Ruth Ellen Fitch, and Diana McClure, speaking for her husband, Edward McClure. It was a great, well-done film. And after that, I interviewed Patricia Nguyen, the Globe Spotlight Team editor. I thought it was a good interview. It was fun doing it. She really brought a lot of information to the table, and I think people really appreciated the fact that she really sort of took the discussion to a different level. And finally, in terms of the entertainment piece, I mean, it was incredible. The Testostatones from Brookline High School did a medley of songs that was really well thought, selected very thoughtfully and performed very well. Reggie Gibson, who we all know and love over the last few years, from his performances over the last few years, came up with something new, a 15-minute segment of a one-hour program that was titled, in his words, "The Words and Ideas of Martin Luther King Put to Music" in an original composition. It was Reggie doing some of the speaking as a performance artist, and then a string trio and a singer, a soprano, who sang the words that were selected in the performance. Really, that's really something unique, and, unique, not unusual, but unique, that I think people really, really got a lot out of. And finally, our poet Laurence Zvi Cecil, read a poem by Gwendolyn Brooks that was selected in order to sort of lead into the film by Harvey Brodmann, Brookline Facing Civil Rights. It was a great program, and I think people really appreciated the work that went into it and by the committee and our commission, our Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, which provided incredible support. I also attended the Mass Municipal Association meeting. I guess one thing that I would mention that maybe we want to look at and think about is, and you've probably read it in the newspaper already, the governor's proposal for a tax on real estate transactions for climate change mitigation. I thought it was a very, very interesting proposal. You know, we already have a bond bill for climate change mitigation that is also, would fit together with this, but I urge us to look at this and see what opportunities there may be for us to take advantage of the monies available through this initiative.
Assuming it happens.
Assuming it happens. I mean, who in Massachusetts objects to mitigating climate change?
Right.
I'm sure there are people.
Right.
That's actually a nice lead-in to, just want to let people know that the land bank study committee will be meeting tomorrow, and I know we will probably talk about that. So stay tuned. The meeting is at 5:30 PM tomorrow in the Select Board Conference Room. And then I also wanted to do a plug for the 2019 workshop, White People Challenging Racism: Moving From Talk to Action. We've seen a lot of discussion on the TMMA listserv from graduates. That is being provided by Brookline Adult and Community Education, and the series is a bunch of Tuesday evenings in April. For more information, you can register online, www.brooklineadulted.org.
Okay, well, as long as we're talking about legislators and tomorrow night, the Brookline Democratic Town Committee is hosting a legislative roundtable. It's going to be in Town Hall. I believe it's Room 103. I'm not positive about that. But I expect that certainly there will be a few of our Brooklines legislators. We have Senator Cream, Tommy Vitolo, Anika Eluardo. I don't know if, I don't think they've had confirmation yet about some of the others of them, but it should be an interesting meeting, and maybe we can get some reaction to this proposal.
Okay. I understand we have at least one person signing up for public comment. Mr. Roni, five minutes.
Larry Oni, I live here in Two Marshall Street in Brookline. What I want to talk about is the town government culture of bullying that has and is taking And my thought is that bullying is never going to be eliminated wherever there's a hierarchy or a social system, but it can be regulated. So the spirit of what I'm talking about is, how are we going to regulate this culture of bullying? And I also want to say that people as individuals can be well-meaning, but the impact on what they do, if you talk to them candidly and privately, they see it as either intimidation, retaliation, harassment. And so I have some suggestions about how we can regulate this culture of bullying. The other thing that I want to say, just in terms of my background, I have been active as a citizen. I've lived in the town since 1974, and in 1985 became active as a citizen in dealing with the issue of race relations in our town. And one of the things that was drilled in my head when I lived on Brown Street, which I no longer live there, that Brookline sees itself as special, exceptional, and we're very different from other communities. We're a special place. So I have some suggestions of things that could be done to regulate this culture of bullying. One is that I think that it would be wonderful if the town administrator, once a month, for one hour, had office hours where any citizen could come and talk with him. A large number of people in town do not know who is the town administrator, will not recognize him. And the reason why I say the town administrator is, part of my background is a graduate of the Maxwell School of Citizenship and Public Affairs in public administration. I am very sensitive, and I've done troubleshooting in state and local government, but I'm very sensitive to this political policy and administrative dichotomy. We have a very unique structure here in town, where the five select people are also police and fire commissioners, okay? At the diversity and inclusion meeting on Wednesday night, a member of that commission, who has lived in town for a long time and happens to be a town employee, raised the issue, we don't have checks and balances in our town government. So one thing that, one suggestion is that the town administrator, once a month, one hour, has an open-door policy, and any citizen can come in and talk with the town administrator. I also feel that as select people, that it also would be wonderful if, once a month, one of the select people had office hours here, where a citizen could come in and talk about any issues regarding the select people.
Please conclude.
Excuse me?
Please conclude. Five minutes.
I'm up.
Yeah. Five minutes have elapsed.
All right. One more minute, sir?
One more minute.
We in town are supportive of the Metco program, and there are Metco alums who feel that they have experienced this culture of bullying. So the other thing I want to say is that there is a member of the Committee on Organization and Structure, which I assume the select people appoint.
No, we don't. The moderator appoints that.
Okay. To do with the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Farley.
Do you have a question, really? Regina Farley? What's going on here? Can you, do you have a date picked for the special time meeting?
Yes, we'll be setting that. It's the last item on our agenda. It's April 9.
It will be the last day that it could be.
Yep.
I see. Is there, I've been asked if there's a possibility for people to submit more articles?
No.
I don't know the answer.
The answer's no.
No?
No.
Is that how, the rules of a special time meeting?
Yes.
So there's no window?
There's no window.
Oh, okay.
But there's an opportunity at the Maytown meeting, but a number of folks, led by John Harris, submitted a resolution that the Select Board will sponsor. So in effect, we're honoring the wishes of a bunch of citizens who wanted a resolution on the warrant. But it's a separate town meeting.
Can you explain the difference between the first and the second?
Well, when we get to the agenda item, it'll become clear. You'll see the warrant articles, and your warrant article has to stand on its own. That's the way it's been explained to me.
Story of my life.
Right. Anything else? Let's delve into our calendar. We have minutes for, what dates? January 8th and January 15th. I had a very small change on the 8th. All those in favor of approving the minutes of January 8th as amended and January 15th as presented, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have a question of accepting a gift in the amount of $3,000 from the Sita Yoga Ashram in Boston. Mr. Casanova-Davis.
Good evening, Justin Casanova-Davis, Assistant Town Administrator. Here to ask the Select Board to give approval for a donation of $3,000, $1,000 for the General Fund, $1,000 for the Police, and $1,000 for the Fire Department.
This is a gift every year. They come in and break bread with us, tell us what's going on.
It's a gift to move taxes, I believe?
In a sense.
Are they located in Brookline?
They have.
Didn't know that.
So I'll move that we accept this gift, $3,000 from the Sita Yoga Ashram in Boston, $1,000 for the General Fund, $1,000 for the Police Department, and $1,000 for the Fire Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And we, of course, thank the Ashram for their generosity.
We have a question of approving a Chapter 90 reimbursement request in the amount of $1,642,507.52 to Mast dot Highway Division for funding related to Babcock Street. I thought I'd never hear Babcock Street again, Mr. Ditto.
We're getting there. So this represents our first request, reimbursement request, and it includes all work that's been approved up to December 11. It also includes police detail bills. I'd say right now, we're about 60% complete, and we're anticipating starting construction no later than April 15. If we get lucky, maybe.
Restarting.
And we also, even with that start date, we figure we can be done by the end of July. So we're getting there.
Okay. It's already an improvement over what was there.
Definitely an improvement in the paving, certainly.
Yeah.
But most of us know this.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Ditto? This is the easiest, $1.6 million. Okay, I'll move that we approve and execute a Chapter 90 reimbursement request in the amount of $1,642,507.52 to Mast dot Highway Division for funding related to the reconstruction of Babcock Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have two temporary all kinds alcoholic non-beverage sales licenses to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum, as follows. This is at 15 Newton Street for product launch reception to be held on Friday, February 1st, from 6:30 to 10:30, and for an annual members' party to be held on Saturday, February 2nd, from 5:30 to 10:30. Looks okay?
The Police Department has reviewed both applications and sees no reason to deny either.
Okay, so I'll move in omnibus fashion, those two temporary licenses. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Last item in the miscellaneous calendar is an adjustment to the Newberry College Acquisition Advisory Committee charge. And we had our public hearing, or I should say, the advisory subcommittee had its public hearing, on the reserve fund transfer, which, $150,000, which would support the activities of the committee. And there were a number of suggestions made by committee members and members of the public who were there. Probably the most substantive was that the list is long and the time is short, so the focus of the committee needs to be doing the appropriate due diligence and strategizing to ensure that we are, can make a timely bid, and even if not all the items in the list are done, if the timing is such we have to make the bid, we should make the bid. So the committee needs to be prioritizing its activities with that in mind, and that's reflected in the first, in the additional sentence in the first paragraph, which says, "And as such," well, let me start. "This committee will support the acquisition phase for the property, and as such, the tasks listed in the charge should be prioritized, prioritized to ensure that appropriate due diligence is conducted to make a timely bid for the property." And then, so that was really the main thrust of the, I'll take it as a constructive suggestion. There was also some discussion, we had identified that the committee should be making a preliminary assessment of possible uses. We stated upfront in the charge that this committee will not be advising the Select Board on the ultimate use of the property, and that's really for a later phase, should we be successful, and to kind of indicate that that's what they're doing. But we still need to identify potential municipal or educational uses, just, if nothing else, a legal justification. It's also part of our due diligence. So I'm suggesting that we change the topic heading, Preliminary Assessment of Possible Uses, to Preliminary Identification of Possible Uses, to indicate that, you know, the level of effort that should be in that area. The one thing that I personally disagreed with some of the criticism, we have in here a test fit and a high-level price estimate for a two- and three-section elementary school. I think we need that, because I know there's a lot of folks out there who are hoping that Newberry would be perhaps an alternate site for Baldwin School, and doing a test fit and high-level price estimate would help us determine whether or not that's the case. And some have said it would be a lot cheaper to put a school up there. I'm not convinced of that, but this would help us determine that. So.
It couldn't be cheaper than putting a school on property we own.
Right. So, but this will help us determine that, and it's one thing for me to say it, but we need really experts to help us get there. Or not get there. Maybe it is cheaper. I don't know. And that's kind of it. There was, there's also a minor suggestion that we investigate the legalities of potentially doing a ground lease to another organization, so I included that in the legal analysis piece. Any questions, discussion from the board? Okay, so I'll move the revised charge of the Newberry College Acquisition Advisory Committee. And the first meeting is.
Wednesday, January 30.
Downstairs in Room 111. And a lot of the background work is going to be handled by various staff departments, and we're going to be getting those staff departments going prior to the meeting, so hopefully the committee will hit the ground running. So all those in favor of the revised charge, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Moving on to our calendar, we have the budget objectives. Mr. Casanova-Davis.
Good evening again, Justin Casanova-Davis, Assistant Town Administrator. So here to get approval for the fiscal year 20 Select Board objectives. We took a lot of your feedback and suggestions, and came up with another draft. We added some categories that was mentioned, as well as language for a land bank committee, senior housing, electric hybrid vehicles, adjusted our diversity language, as well as short-term rentals, a few of the suggestions that we made, and incorporated those.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the subcategories. It makes it a lot.
It makes, much improved.
I'll let everybody kind of go through it.
It looks good to me, and I find it easier to navigate now that there are these headings.
I had a worry.
So I think it was a good suggestion by, I think, select person Heller.
Some of the language, you know, for instance, in number 45, I would prefer to say, "To establish a goal" rather than "Consider establishing." I think we use that same "to establish" in number 42, and that's basically, I think, what we're doing. I think we understand the difficulty of adjusting our approach to climate action without having a fleet that is all-electric or hybrid, so I don't.
You know, the only concern we have is that the board has.
You know, the only concern we have is that the board hasn't...
I know, it's my...
Hasn't, no, no, it's, the board hasn't established a goal, so if you intend to do that, I guess that's fine.
I would have another comment here, and that is...
Well, let's finish that. Are we in agreement it should be to establish as opposed to consider establishing?
We haven't established a goal.
Well, we've established priorities through the Climate Action Plan. It's not specifically targeting any one of these items, but I think it's implicit, and there's no way to get there unless we do it, you know. And that goal is 2050, and we're now being told that we're going to have a serious, serious problem if we don't do it by 2030, so I don't...
I don't have a problem establishing a goal. I think it bears mentioning that there's more that has to happen than just buying the vehicles.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, if it's all electric and charging stations, and there's some due diligence that needs to happen, but I'm perfectly comfortable moving in the direction of an all-electric hybrid fleet and establishing a goal to achieve that aim.
Okay, are we all set on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, this is related.
Okay.
In the sense that, I mean, I guess I don't really have an issue with the establishing goal part. I do have an issue with the limitations in what we're establishing a goal to pursue, and that is, you know, electric hybrid, that's today's technology. And technology is changing very fast, and many of our environmental thinking is sort of stuck in what is current technology, not even accepting the importance of innovative technologies. And one type of technology that could make all of this sort of 20th century stuff is use of hydrogen as a fuel for vehicles. So, I mean, what I'm, all I'm saying is that we need to be a little broader than this, you know, proceeding. Maybe what we're really talking about is non-fossil fuel.
No, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem saying it that way, but I do think that, you know, it's the same, I agree with you that there may be other technologies that come along.
So, why don't, why don't we do this? Mr. Kleckner has whispered in my ear that it's not essential that we vote this tonight, so why don't you guys work on the language you want to see, and then submit it for next week? Are there any other items?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
So, in our package was a memo from Carla Benka regarding the zoning review by law.
To Carla Benka, not from her.
Carla Benka's name was on there.
It was from Allison Steinfeld.
Right. So, I wonder, and I didn't see anything about that in here, I wonder if she...
You know, it's funny, it's funny you say that, because I was thinking about that just a couple of minutes ago.
And the land losing, land...
It would, yeah, somewhere between items 23 and 34 should be an item about the review of the zoning bylaw, because that's a major effort of the planning department.
I thought that was in there last year, so, right. Found that, yeah.
Okay.
And in that letter, it says that the general code, which is a firm that they're using, also is going to identify issues that require policy direction, so there should be meaning, you know, changes of a substantive nature in the bylaw, so there should be something that talks about that. What are the policy issues, the substantive provisions in the bylaw that we should be looking at? The zoning bylaws, we should be looking at. I mean, right now, the main thing they're doing is just reorganizing, so it's more readable and searchable and better.
Anything else? Okay, so it'll come back next week, and if you have anything else. What I'd like to do, before we get to the grant locations, I'm going to be going downstairs, and then I was thinking I would come back up for the town meeting, but being that we're a little ahead, why don't we just do, why don't we do the town meeting warrant, and then I can just go downstairs and not have to worry about coming back up?
Except that you have to sign something.
I'll come back and sign, but, so, and this, I guess, is in, Ms. Fraley was asking about the town meetings, so here's the way it's going to play out. We're going to have two special town meetings on April 9th. The first one will be at 7:00 PM, and there'll be three warrant articles. The first warrant article is actually a collective bargaining warrant article, just in case we have a collective bargain agreement that can be ratified by a town meeting. The second warrant article is the, is the real reason to have the special town meeting, and that is the, with all-encompassing language, that should we be in a position to ask town meeting to approve the acquisition of Newberry College? This would be the warrant article that enables that. So in effect, it's a placeholder, but with appropriate, very broad language that says in part, "See if the town will authorize a select board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise," in fee simple, "some of the parcels of land comprising the real property of Newberry College," blah, 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 "for general municipal and/or educational uses, and for all purposes and uses accessory thereto." So that's the broad general language that allows for any kind of municipal or educational use. And this is the same language we have used in other acquisition warrant articles. So this language is tried and true, and it has worked. And then Article 3 is a language submitted by a number of town meeting members, led with the primary petitioner, lead petitioner is John Harris, and I believe Anita Johnson, which is a resolution calling for the town to pursue acquisition of Newberry College for municipal and other purposes, which we are doing. So it's kind of a resolution, having town meeting ask us to do what we're doing, so I don't see any harm putting it on there. And then the second town meeting is the town meeting that we need to do pursuant to statute where there's been 200 signatures with the language submitted by the signatories, and that's the, "See if the town will raise appropriate transfer sum of money to fund the costs, adequate to appropriate some or all of Newberry College properties to situate an elementary school." So that's the second town meeting. So with that said, one thing, one thing I will say, the Newberry College Acquisition Committee is going to be looking at making a bid for Newberry College, and we don't need, we don't need town meeting to make the bid. We just need, if the bid were to be successful, we need town meeting to affirm and approve the bid and actually do the acquisition. So, you know, the notion that we should have a town meeting very quickly, you know, there's nothing to approve very quickly, because we're kind of operating on Newberry's timetable, and that's not going to happen that quickly. So, we'll also be putting the same broad acquisition language on the May warrant, so if it's not ready for April, we'd have a second shot in May. So that's how we're covering that base. So for those of, for those of you in our viewing audience who are nervous about putting the town meeting off, just be assured that we can, we can pursue purchase without a vote of town meeting. We just need town meeting at the end of the process, not at the beginning of the process. Okay, so, what we need to do is, we will need to take a vote calling for a special town meeting that waives the requirements of Sections 2.1.2 to 2.1.3 of the bylaws, of the town bylaws. So, Melissa, okay, here, okay. So, I will move that we call a special town meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, at 7 o'clock at the High School Auditorium, and to waive the requirements of Sections 2.1.2 through 2.1.4 of the town bylaws to open and close the warrant, and to insert in the said warrant the following articles, and this, these are three articles.
So, the warrant that we've drafted for you has three articles. The first is collective bargaining.
Right.
In the event we have an agreement, the police is the last union that's outstanding. The second article is the language provided by town council regarding the acquisition of the Newberry site, and the third is the resolution that the, we received when people thought there was an open warrant with which to submit articles, which of course there's not...
So we will sponsor it, so, just for procedural purposes.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor of the waiver and approving the warrant, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
So that's the first town meeting on April 9th. The second town meeting, be the same procedural vote?
The only change is that the time of the town meeting is noticed for 7:30, so that there's a break between the two.
Right. So we have the same waiver of Sections 2.1.2 through 2.1.4, and to approve the Article 1 of that second special town meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair, select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so I'm going to turn the proceedings over to my colleague, select person Franco, and I will see you when we're signing stuff.
So the next item on the agenda are several grants of locations. We're going to start with a petition of Verizon, New England, and N-Star Electric for grants of locations on Thorndike Street. And these were continued from last week's meeting. I see a representative from Verizon, so why don't you just update us and remind us what the situation here is?
Good evening, my name is Steve Bigley. I work for Utility Consultants, and I'm here to represent Verizon's interest. Poll in question on, I don't remember the street, on Thorndike Street, the current location of the pole would be too close to the footprint of the new building being built, and it would create a safety hazard and electrical hazard. Request to relocate the pole puts it within parameters for OSHA safety. And once the pole is moved, Eversource has wires that rise on the pole, so they would have to construct a conduit to meet the new pole.
So Verizon's interest is just moving their equipment that's on the existing pole to the new pole? You're not doing any digging or...
The only digging we do is put a hole to put the new pole in.
Okay. All right, let's hear from representatives of N-Star about their part of this work.
Hi, my name is Katie Flary, and I'm here representing Eversource with my supervisor, Kelly Carrera. And we need to, once that pole is moved, then install conduit.
So, right now it's a riser pole, so when we move the pole back, obviously we need to move our underground connection. That comes from the manhole on Harvard Street. We're going to move that underground connection to the new pole, but also in the same trench and continuing that trench further down, we do need to place conduit that will actually go to the transformer serving the new building.
And what practical impact on residents of Thorndike Street and the town is this work going to have? Are there parking restrictions, service interruptions? What's the impact on the butters?
Generally, the service interruptions are just going to be as long as it takes to kind of the lines over.
It's like an hour.
Yeah, if that. So very minimal impact like that. And traffic flow, at least one lane traffic will be kept open at all times, so we won't completely block travel.
On Thorndike or Harvard?
Thorndike, and probably it'd have to be a part of Harvard, because the manhole's like right in the center of that intersection there, but obviously police details and everything else.
So, first of all, somebody's going to take, Verizon is going to take the pole out and dig a hole for a new pole.
Yeah, so it's a Verizon's...
So who's going to fill in the old hole?
So it's a Verizon set and maintain area. What happens is Verizon's going to dig, they're going to place a new pole, okay? Then we are going to make our transfers, we're going to take the conduit, put our conduit to the new pole. Anybody that's attached to that pole now, who goes from the top down for the attachees, everybody's going to move their lines and equipment to the new pole. Once all the lines are open, Verizon will come back and take out the old pole and fill in that hole where the old pole is.
Okay. So you're going to be digging in the street...
Correct.
...to put these new conduits. And we are concerned about when you, when you dig up our streets, that you will encounter gas leaks, and we want to know whether, and I'm assuming it's National Grid, unless it's Eversource, are you in charge of the gas pipes in the...
No, Eversource is in charge of it.
No, I didn't think so. I didn't think so, but just, I know that in some areas you are, so, just confirming. So I'm assuming that you've contacted National Grid to inform them, and that you will coordinate with them and have them come out. We understand that people are smelling gas in that area? So we're assuming that there are some leaks.
So everything will be dig saved, following protocol. Our street opening permits issued following protocol. If we do smell gas or do anything while we're on site, we obviously report it to the proper authorities. I did receive your question regarding our company contacting National Grid to report to you guys what your infrastructure is. I have questions on our responsibility and liability on that, so I have referred that to our legal department.
Okay.
I only found out about this Thursday afternoon, so I've not heard back from legal yet, but we'll certainly be back in touch to determine how it's, you know what I mean?
Well, that's fine, but I want to know the answer before you start your digging. So I want to know that National Grid is going to come and look at the situation and determine whether there's a leak and what it takes to fix it while our street is being opened. I mean, we're not going to have you, you know, no, it's no offense, but we don't want you to dig up our street, fill it, and then later just have National Grid come back and dig it up all over again. That's wasteful. And it, we need the opportunity to, for you to have National Grid come and fix the leaks now. And we've imposed conditions about this on other grants of location, and we can cer, I would certainly propose that we do that this time.
Again, I really don't have a good response until, like...
Okay, well, maybe, maybe we should table it again until you do have a response.
Well, honestly, we can table it again, because the whole issue here is, you won't order us a street opening permit to do the digging until this is resolved. So for the purpose of not coming back before the board appropriate the location, you can at least approve the area of conduit, and again, not issue the permits until that's been resolved. Because we can't dig it all the way, so, if you're comfortable with that.
I would certainly support a condition. I mean, this is the second time in consecutive weeks that we've taken this up. I have no interest in prolonging it, but I agree with select board member Heller that this is an issue we take seriously, and I want an answer before we open up the streets.
So we're giving that responsibility to the town administrator to make sure that the digging permit is not issued.
Well, to.
So we would vote this.
We would vote it conditional upon receiving assurance that National Grid has come and taken a look at the area and inspected and there's no evidence of gas leaks in the area that need to be repaired. And if there are, then they'll be repaired simultaneous to the conduit being.
Or prior to the, you know, in the process.
My construction department will know that that needs to be resolved before they can even ask for that. So like I said, if we can get the approval contingent upon that agreement coming to terms before.
Well, and if people are smelling gas in that area, we want to know why. You know, but National Grid's not here, so I can't ask them. I appreciate that. But anyway, I would propose a condition that we approve the grant of location with a condition that it's a responsibility of Verizon and Eversource to notify National Grid to come to the site and evaluate whether there are gas leaks in that area, to fix the gas leaks while this process, while the street is already dug up, and to report back to us when this work is completed.
So that implies that they get a digging permit before they fix the gas leaks, so I think we have to phrase that a little differently.
Well, I think that National Grid has a way of testing whether or not, without digging up the entire street and looking, whether there are gas leaks in the area. So they need to come and test. And there are tests developed by, or in use by people at BU and other places which indicate whether or not there are leaks. And if there's, people are smelling gas, it's probably, there probably are leaks. I mean, it's, you know, when you hear hoofbeats, you don't look for zebras. So anyway, well, if you want to change the language, but I think that.
Hoofbeats? I'm sorry. I was thinking about your zebra.
Okay. Well, you know, we know that not horses aren't, you know, you're not looking for zebras. Maybe if you heard a hoofbeat, maybe you would look for a horse, but not a zebra. Anyway, I was just trying to lighten the mood a little bit here, but at any rate, at any rate, National Grid needs to come and test and determine if there are gas leaks in that area and make a report. I mean, we need to know whether there are and there are not. We believe that they're most likely, given the reports we've heard from people, that there are, but you know, again, that's.
So I'm just curious why this falls on the people who are before us and not our own DPW.
Because they're the ones who need the permits to do the digging. And, you know, we have been very unsuccessful, very frankly, at getting National Grid to come and do these tests. So we're engaging you as a partner in this process.
But if their legal team comes back and says it's not their responsibility, what then?
It's not their responsibility to test, but it is, it seems to me that it is a part of planning the whole project to coordinate with the other agencies and utilities that are involved in this process. And when they dig up the street, they are exposing the gas pipes, most likely.
But if their legal team comes back and says it's not their responsibility?
To make a call to National Grid?
Yeah.
Well, it would be their responsibility to follow safety protocols.
Yeah.
And I would think that that would.
Yeah, that would be safe. I mean, they mark everything out there so we don't.
But that could very well be a different department than the people who schedule, you know, testing of gas leaks.
Well, at the very least, the town has an interest in having all the roadwork completed in an area simultaneous rather than opening and closing the street in successive years. So that's at the root of what we're trying to do here. We want to make sure that there are no gas leaks in the area, and if there are, we want all the work to be done simultaneously.
I guess I just don't understand why we're not tasking the project manager on our side with following up on this.
Well, we've.
Well, we have.
We have, we've tried it before.
He will contact them, but we, I don't think we should be issuing a permit until National Grid gets out here. That's all we're saying, and tests to see.
So blame National Grid.
So I guess at this point then my request would be just that you guys do approve and rent the location for the pole and our conduit. Again, on the condition the street opening permit is not issued until they're satisfied with National Grid's advice.
Just going back to the issue of service interruptions, I heard mentioned that there'll be brief interruptions, maybe an hour while the line is transferred over. What sort of procedure do you go through to notify customers that there may be an interruption in their service?
Honestly, I can't answer that one. I can find out and get an answer for you. A lot of times it depends what type of services are in the area. If it's, you know, obviously like a hospital, some big thing like that where it's critical, they're usually on backup, they don't even notice the interruption. It's the generator, this particular residential building they're putting out now, we're going to have any residents in it yet, so interruptions to them will be noticed. I'm not sure with the other underground riser fees out there, but again, it's just a matter of disconnecting the electricity wiring up to their lines, so it's very minimal. I think an hour is a lot, usually a half hour or less, so they try to do it kind of everybody's at work, you don't really notice it. There are rules in place for notifications to certain types of residents visiting, I'm not familiar with what those rules are.
So are you going to have, are you going to be digging from the old pole to the new pole or from the manhole?
From the manhole to the new pole. And then from, so we're going to have one trench from the manhole to the new pole, and that trench is going to continue past the new pole and go over to the transformer that's going to serve the building.
So how many feet would that be?
It's on the petition schedule.
One's 153 and the other one 167.
About 167 feet.
Significant trench.
And then. All right, so about 153 to 167.
So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item? Mr. Van Skoyak, come and join the party.
Thank you very much. John Van Skoyak, precinct 13, town meeting member. I actually didn't come here to speak on this, but I heard the word pole and it rang a bell with me because for more years than I can even count now, we've had a double pole in front of our house. And every time we have asked any of the companies that have wires or whatever on that pole, how can we get this double pole, unsightly, very ugly double pole that consists of basically a new pole and then the old pole with all of the wiring on it just lashed to the new pole? How can we get that converted to just a single pole? The answer comes back, oh, well, it's not our pole. And they do this runaround. You have to talk, if I'm talking to National Grid, they say you have to talk to Verizon. If I'm talking to Verizon, they say you have to talk to Comcast. If I'm talking to Comcast, you know, they say you have to talk to National Grid. And nothing gets done. And for the purposes of this hearing, my question would be, is this going to be a double pole? I don't see that specified. It doesn't seem like it is, but you might, you know, you might want to know. And my next question is going to be, what in the words of Verizon or National Grid or, I'm sorry, which is the electric, which is the electric company?
Eversource.
Eversource, excuse me. What is the existing state law governing double polling and the requirement that double poles be converted to single poles within a set limit of time? And are they in compliance with that? And if they're not, I know that there's a limit to how much you as a board can do, but it just seems like you might use every single opportunity when they have to get a permit to say, yeah, we'll give you the permit. First tell us, when are you going to deal with these double poles all over town? So that's my little speech for tonight.
Please.
Okay, so I very briefly explained when they put a new pole in, they weren't going to talk down electric transfers or any other attachies, municipal fire laws, any communications, Verizon just needs a lot of attachment. This is a Verizon set. Verizon will be the pole. We do have a database that works with the town and all the utility companies. So as soon as the pole goes in, Verizon enters that in the database, the electric companies notify, they'll transfer. And in sequence, as the transfers are complete, the other companies are notified. The last one to transfer is Verizon, they'll be able to pull that kind of issue for their line. So that's the process. I can certainly speak with John outside, give you the phone number of the pole number and specifically address that one and see where we're at. I mean, obviously I'm not familiar, so I don't know if there's still lines attached or reattached, but I can certainly follow up on that one. This pole on Thorndike Street is not going to be a double pole because it includes about 58 feet away from the existing one.
Thank you for agreeing, offering to talk to Mr. Van Skoyak about that issue and hopefully we can get some movement now after many attempts.
So I'm Ruth Ann Snyder, town meeting member, precinct 6. Had this been notified to the public, I think you could fill this room with people outside wanting to complain about the poles in their neighborhoods and the lack of response from the service companies to people's individual complaints. So I think it's very wonderful that as the representative, you know, of our town, that you're going to hold these people, this service industry's feet to the fire. And I would encourage you to do as much leverage for, as you possibly can, on behalf of the citizens of this town. And I would actually wait for, see their response before I, that I created legislation in fear of a response. I would go forward and then, with, which is in the best interest of my constituents and then see what they respond to. I think that they have a history of disregarding the needs of citizens and we have to respect and protect the quality of life in our community because these lines are just getting bigger and better and, you know, they're just weaving their way all over the town. And so at this point, I would like to speak for my pole, which is at the intersection of Perry and Brooks Street. And it's, you'll see it, it's right on the corner there. And I mean, it's almost, you can't get good reception anymore because it's just so much wires around. And they, you get the runaround, it's not my pole, it's not my wire. And I think that I speak on behalf of a roomful of people that would be here if they knew we're having this conversation, so go for it.
Anybody else wish to speak on this agenda item? Final questions from my colleagues on the board? So we've talked about some conditional language. Kate, did you get it down? Seeing a nodding of the head. So I will move to approve Verizon and N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy to relocate a pole and two petitions of Eversource to construct and locations for such lines of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Thorndike Street, northerly side, relocate a pole 143/7 approximately 45 feet northeast of Harvard Street, 55 feet to the northeast. Thorndike Street conduit northeasterly from manhole 3671 at Harvard Street, install a distance of about 153 feet to relocated pole 143/7. Thorndike Street conduit northerly from manhole 3671 at Harvard Street, install a distance of about 167 feet to 455 Harvard Street. Those members voting in the affirmative will signify by saying aye. Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
With the condition?
With the condition, of course, that National Grid be informed and do a test of the area before approval is given. So with that interruption in the vote, select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next public hearing, again, Eversource for some work on Coolidge Street. What's the story here?
So this is on Coolidge Street. We're requesting to install 37 feet of conduit and this is going to provide service to 420 Harvard Street, which is a commercial and residential site.
And any service interruptions or lane closures or parking restrictions associated with this work?
No.
Okay.
How long do you estimate this work to take?
Probably one day.
Will there be any impact to sidewalk?
It would be minimal if there was.
Okay.
Select person Heller, do you want to attach the same condition?
Absolutely.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item? A repeat customer.
Repeat customer. So I haven't thought about this before right now either, but you asked if there was any damage to the sidewalk and she said minimally. And in my neighborhood, we have these big concrete squares and when something gets cracked open or broken, they just come and put a little tar back in. And I think that there should be a higher standard at which they make their repairs. If they're digging up our sidewalks and we pay this amount of money, I think they should adapt to bring it back as existed. It should, you should have a higher standard of asking them to make their repairs.
Wouldn't it be part of the permit?
Well, maybe Mr. Ditto can tell us what the normal practice is when this type of work takes place, what the condition we expect the utilities to return roadways and sidewalks to.
So the replacement work is, if it's concrete, concrete goes back. If it's Betumis concrete, Betumis concrete goes back. There shouldn't be any Betumis concrete in a concrete sidewalk. We have a permit inspector that's very thorough in this type of work and if there is a violation, we'll certainly take care of it. And the leverage we use is that we just don't issue any more permits until it's done.
All right. With that, I'll move in favor of the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Coolidge Street, northeasterly from manhole 10638, 120 feet southwest.
It would be the same, minimal, maybe an hour, if that.
And Wendy?
Service, so we're breaking into the manhole, the building, there shouldn't be service interruptions there. And again, it's over on the same side of the street, hasn't any disruption, so there will be one traveling block.
And you expect this work to take place this month or in the near future?
In the near future, I'm not sure of how, but I'm not sure how far along the buildings gone because when they need electricity, so probably somewhere in the middle of the winter.
So is, what kind of day is it? So is, what kind of day do you give it? Because this is a fairly busy intersection.
So the DPW, when they issue street opening permits, generally three hours, and says, okay, I'm like, this time, so you're on 112 or at least basically 112.
I see we've got some other new service that you're proposing on Dummer Street and on Harvard Street. Why don't you tell us about those as well?
Okay. On Dummer Street, we're requesting to install 18 feet of conduit, and this is a service upgrade for an existing building. That is, it's at 832 Commonwealth Avenue.
And I see on our information sheet that there's going to be some parking restrictions during the work, but no road closures or service interruptions are anticipated. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And what about the final bit of work that you're proposing on Harvard Street? What's the story there?
So on Harvard Street, we're requesting to install 20 feet of conduit, and it's to provide service for new underground, new underground service for a new six-story preschool that's located at 127 Harvard Street.
And same questions I've asked in the past about service interruptions and parking restrictions and road closures. I think I know the answer, but-
It would be the same answer.
Same conditions.
These are public hearings, or they're members of the public that want to speak on these three petitions. Seeing no activity, follow questions from my colleagues on the board. We will attach the same condition to these three applications. Let me do some reading. I'll move favorable action on the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Pearl Street, southeasterly from manhole 25043, approximately 192 feet north of Washington Street, a distance of 95 feet. I will further move favorable action on the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits, manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public ways. Dummer Street, northeasterly from manhole 9538, approximately 173 feet, west of Cottage Farm Road, a distance of 18 feet. And on Harvard Street, easterly from manhole 12806, at the intersection of Auburn Street, a distance of approximately 20 feet, to 127 Harvard Street, again with the conditions previously discussed. Those members voting in the affirmative will signify by-
Can I make sure that you reiterate that these three votes are, or the sum of us voting, that's what you want to call it, are all subject to the same condition about National Grid and gas leaks?
Yes. So those members voting in the affirmative on that motion with the condition will signify by saying aye. Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And with that, I think our business is concluded.
David Bach?
We're very efficient.